I would like to bring this hearing to order if my name. Thank you all. That was awesome. I wish I had classers like you back in the day. I'd like to bring this public 1028 hearing to order. This evening's public hearing is called the 1028 hearing. A hearing of this type is a legal requirement prior to the public school corporation moving forward to approve the issuance of bonds. This process relates to the potential financing of the proposed construction and equipping of one new elementary schools we located at 748 Spice Wood Drive, Clarksville, Indiana, 47129. That's the site of the current Parkwood Elementary, and a new pool located in Jeffersonville High School, 2315 Allison Lane, Jeffersonville, Indiana, 47130, respectively, and generally improvements at all academic buildings of the school corporation or the project and the financing of this project. Mr. Walker, would you?
Yeah, I wanted to interject a few things just to remind the board and also thank, I want to thank real quick all the students, staff, community members, parents for coming to the hearing tonight. Just want to remind everyone, you know, of how we have arrived at this point. If you remember about three, three and a half years ago, we put together a facility task force of about 70 people that looked over our facility study that was done by Lancer Plus BB. From that task force, we had a priority list created by the task force, which was brought to the board in a work session. From that work session, we created a five-year facility plan. These projects that are part of this hearing are year three of that five-year facility plan. I think it's important to note that, you know, that plan we laid out, we're sticking to it. We haven't deviated from that five-year plan, and this is year three of that plan. Obviously, the two big projects within this plan this year, three, is the pool at Jeff High and replacing Parkwood Elementary. Parkwood Elementary is right at 54 years old. There's a growing student population there because of the apartments that are being built in that area. We feel like it's a building that needs to be replaced. To add on to that footprint is not feasible or cost-effective. The pool at Jeff High is over 50 years old. Very little has been done to it except some aesthetic paint and things of that nature. We feel like the most cost-effective decision we can make is to build a new pool there versus trying to renovate that old pool into an eight-lane or 10-lane pool, which would probably end up being well over 70% of the cost of building the new one. So it just makes sense to build a new pool there. I also want to reiterate that it's not just the pool in the school, especially Jeff High with the pool. You know, by building a standalone new pool outside, you know, just off the back of the campus there, off the back of the school, it also opens up space within the school. So the question would be, well, what would we do with the old pool? Well, that pool space could be renovated into a wrestling arena or wrestling space. The current wrestling room could add additional weight room space within the school underneath, which is needed for a school in Jeff. Jeff has a very small weight room space for the size of the school it is. And one question I didn't address last night is, well, what about the weight room that was supposed to be built on the Jeff High campus? Well, we've paused that because of these hearings. Instead of building two different standalone buildings, it only made sense to just build one that incorporates that locker room space that was going to be the football locker room. So there's a lot of things at play here. We feel the right thing to do for the corporation and long-term is to replace Parkwood with a new building, also build a new pool at Jeff High. The great thing about all this, I said it last night, I'll reiterate it again, is that we can do this work and not raise the tax rate on anyone in our school district. These will be tax-neutral projects. Our current tax rate is $1.10. Three years ago, during those task force meetings, we committed to keeping the tax rate at $1.10. It has remained $1.10 the last three years, Laura, and we are committed to keeping it at $1.10 moving forward even with these projects. So like I said, they're tax-neutral projects. Nobody's going to be negatively impacted by these projects that are being... And with that, the incentive turned over to our CFO, Laura Hewinger.
Thank you, Superintendent. Wanted to address before the meeting tonight to let them know that it does need a team to work through this process. We talked about the hearing, the task force that we had, but we also had a great partnership with all the players that made sure that we're successful in producing the things that we said that are going to get out of our hospitals. And part of that is your bond company, which the board has hired Steve Olmeyer, the best in the state of Indiana, best in the country, in my opinion. And tonight, representative from that is one of the team members that works with us. You're familiar with Matthews here last night. But tonight, we're required by the rules to state the delegates and the announcement that, seriously, the things that yes, is states where we can get through the company. So Luke, I'd like to bring you up to the podium.
Thanks, Laura. Good evening. Luke Riggman with Steve Olmeyer, Mr. Tom, and writer to the school corporation. Thanks, everyone's mentioned, we're required by law to highlight some of these legal parameters. These are maximum parameters that are in the resolution that will be hopefully approved later tonight. The par amount of this borrowing is $96 million. All of this is going to be within the school corporation's total tax rate of $1.10, the superintendent mentioned just a second ago. Of that $96 million, approximately $1 billion will go toward cost of issuance, leaving approximately $95 million for hard and soft project costs. Estimated interest rate of 5%. A little bit conservative right now with that 5%, you're probably close to four and a quarter, but given we're priced a little bit away from issuing these bonds, I'd like to have a little, be a little bit conservative there. Of that 5% interest rate on $96 million, you get estimated interest expense of $61.8 million. The maximum lease payment is a maximum that the school corporation can pay in any given year is $14 million. Again, you can always pay less than that depending on the final structure of the bond. You cannot go above that. Simply taking that $14 million divided by the school corporation's 2023 net assessed value is where you get the maximum tax rate impact of $33.42. However, that does not factor in any potential assessed value growth or any outstanding bonds retiring and rolling off. Whenever you do factor that in, that's when you get the net impact, total tax rate of zero cents. Basically, we're not, we're able to do this project without increasing over the $1.10 factor to the school corporation. A couple other ratios I'll go through pretty quickly. The current annual debt service payment as percentage of the net assessed value. Scroll that up real quick.
I'm sorry.
0.68%. Whenever we layer on this new project, 3.74%. Whenever you look at the school corporation's current outstanding debt obligation and the overlapping debts affecting the county, city, town, library, townships, all of that debt as percentage of the net assessed value of the school corporation, that's 8.22%. So that's the total project. We're also going to break it down by law to focus on the elementary school and the pool. Let's scroll down one here. This will be the elementary school portion. Again, this is inclusive in that $96 million. That's not separate to the $96 million. So 46.1 is included in the $96. Again, you'll see the hard and soft project costs after cost of issuance, estimated interest rate and the rest of that is just pro rata based off that $96 million portion of that mix up. When we flip to the Jefferson, when we flip to the high school pool project, $35 million. Again, same thing, cost of issuance, take that out, you get 34.6 in the hard and soft project costs. You'll see the estimated interest rate, interest expense that will be paid over the life of the bonds. Then most importantly, that last line there, the net impact on the total tax rate, once we factor in assessed value growth, the bonds rolling off, and that is zero cents. So that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. All of those numbers are in the resolution tonight. I really just want to highlight some of the important pieces there.
Thank you.
What I just want to add, you know, one of the reasons we can do this without raising the tax rate is just this past year, our assessed value went up 18% in Greater Clark School District. We also, like Luke said, have debt coming off. I also want to mention that it's been challenging. I mean, in terms of what every individual in this room's dealing with in terms of inflation, you know, we're dealing with it individually, but we're also dealing with it at a school level, just like the state is on their state projects. Every project, you know, is anywhere from 25 to 30% inflation over the last two years. So the prices, you know, these seem like big numbers, yes, but when you factor in 30% inflation over the last two years on projects like this, that results in a big number too in terms of additional costs, you know, and so that's something we've had to factor in as we've gone through this process with all of our projects. So, Laura?
And one final note, just before I walk into this meeting, I got the 1782 notice, which is the approval from the DMGA of your 23 budget, which includes this information. And I can stand before you and guarantee you tonight that this will be at $1.10 for you.
I will resume the hearing. The school board does encourage comments and questions related to these projects by the citizens of Greater Clark. If you desire to comment, when I open the public hearing for comments, just raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. You can come forward. You need to state your name and address for the record, please, if you would. You'll have three minutes to talk. In some regards, that's a long time, and some it's not even touching the surface, trust me, from last night. You'll be notified when you have about a minute left to bring your presentation to a conclusion. For the sake of time, if the prior speaker says what you kind of wanted to say anyway, you can, you know, say, you know, that's what I was going to say anyway. You can raise your hand and be acknowledged in the crowd. That would be fine, too. At this time, I will go ahead and open this hearing to the public. So would anyone like to speak? Yes, sir? Hopefully, you're all in support. You all want to, you all can do a little thing. You can come back in here, Ron.
Margot Pagba, 3618 Sawgrass Boulevard, Jeffersonville, Indiana, 47130. Good evening to everyone here today. My name is Margot Pagba, and I have been a part of the swimming community for about seven years, with the last several years with my younger siblings. I've, growing up through the swimming community, I have seen many different emotions. The sadness of missing a cut by several hundreds of a second, and the joy of winning an event and qualifying to state. But one thing remains the same: the community around our swim team. With our community around the swim team, I have noticed positivity and supportness, where no matter the circumstances, like when COVID took us out of the pool, or whether our chlorine pipes are repeatedly getting cut, or the River Valley Pool getting shut down, our community swimming stays supportive and positive throughout all circumstances. And I want to be able to show more people, and especially our younger generation, the kindness and supportive and positivity of our swimming community. It has also taught me many lifelong lessons I will much carry throughout my life. And with that being said, I would love to have the new pool being built to also include our younger generation and the rest of our community.
All right. Emily Miller, 710, oh, hold on, 7107, Bridge Church Road, Charlestown. I'm a senior at Jeffersonville High School, and I've been swimming at this facility for 90 years now. This is because my mother wanted me to do an extracurricular activity, and swimming was the only one I was good at. And because of that, I started swimming at pace when I was in second grade, and I fell in love with the sport and the people around me. At the time, I was going to Charlestown schools and never had a single thought of going to Jeff. When growing up in the water, I, hold on, when growing up in the water... I'm so sorry. Okay, basically, I couldn't imagine my life without swimming, because when life got hard, swimming was always an outlet that I could go to, and the people around me just would support me without even realizing it. These people, my teammates, are more than family, and that's something that some sports just don't get to have, because I'm just around these people nearly 24/7. So also this year, I started lifeguarding at the Jeffersonville Aquatic Center, and at the aquatic center, we give swim lessons to three to 11-year-olds. And during the swim lessons, we teach kids how to float low bubbles and how to get out of the pool safely. We also teach them how to become better swimmers if they already have some experience. With just eight lessons each kid has, I watch kids go from deathly scared of swimming to complaining to their parents that they want to stay in the pool longer. These lessons usually get filled in a matter of days due to availability and swim instructors. Another thing is because the aquatic center is only able to have three sessions in a span of two months, which leaves kids who are dying to learn how to swim 10 months of the whole year, they aren't able to swim for 10 months year-round. But with this proposed building being a free stand, kids would be able to learn how to swim year-round.
Hi, my name is Sarah Legness. I live at 6717 Heritage Lane in Charlestown, and I am a senior at Jeff High. I have been a part of the swim team all four years, as well as a co-captain this year. Today, I stand in support of the new pool with my fellow teammates and coaching staff. Our current pool is outdated, dirty, and frequently has maintenance issues that prevent our swim team from practicing. Unlike other sports, swim requires a facility to carry out its practices accordingly. Our current facility is not up to par with what we need. Our pool has limited lane space for our swimmers and divers, which causes overcrowding during practice. With our current situation of only six lanes with no separate diving well, when we practice at the same time, there are only four lanes for our swimmers to practice in, and only one diving board for our divers. This limited amount of space reduces the amount of time intervals our swimmers can go in on sets, henceforth creating less proficient practices. This means that our team is restricted in its ability to not only grow in numbers, but also become the best swimmers we can. This new facility doesn't only benefit the swimmers, but it would also benefit the wrestlers with their future plans to expand their weight room and wrestling areas. It also benefits sports like basketball, football, track, cross-country, and more that all use the pool for conditioning purposes. The large amount of lane space the new facility would create could allow us to all benefit from the pool simultaneously. This beautiful new facility will attract a lot of outside people to come to Greater Clark and Jeff High. I myself am a transfer student to Jeff High, and I came through swimming. A lot of my teammates are also transfer students that came to Jeff High for swimming. If we decided to come here with not the best resources, imagine all the people that will come here with this new pool. It will cause a domino effect of prosperity within our community. This new pool will provide the space that our team needs to grow the way that I know it can. This isn't just a swim team to me. This is my family, and nothing would make me happier than to see this family grow. I believe that it would be a disservice to this community to not build this new pool, and I strongly urge you to vote yes for not only my swim family, but for the entirety of the community that it would benefit. Thank you.
Uh-oh. I love this. Come on up. Tote your hardware with you.
Thank you to the co-adjuncts on Wispert and TSP. That was awesome. I love seeing that. So my name's Abby Wilson. I live at 314 College Drive in Jeffersonville, 47130, and I was a past swimmer from 2014 to 2018. In my years at Jeff, I won sectional championships, qualified for an elementary sport at state, and graduated as a vegetarian. I then went on to a scholarship to swim in college at the Kennedy University. There, I got five school records, was an NCAA All-American, and captained the national level team. I also graduated swim commodity and was the president of an honor society. In addition to my meaningful accomplishments, swimming has brought me able to meet and make connections with people from all over the world, raise money for cancer, and travel to some pretty cool places for meets. Everything that I did would not have been possible without Jeff and the swimming community that we have here. It's crazy to think that two years before I started high school, I wasn't supposed to go to Jeff at all. My family moved to Jeff for the swim team, and in doing that, all the success that I had in my years of swimming for me and my sisters can be attributed back to this school and this community. By giving us access to a pool on the team, we were able to excel both academically and athletically. Both of my sisters were also sectional champions and all Academy All-Americans. Now, one is about to become a certified PA, and the other just got her national championship ring. My sisters and I were blessed. We were given an opportunity and a family in the swimming community. By building this pool, we as a community are allowing more kids to get into swimming. In the six-lane pool we have right now, there's only so much room in time of the day. If we had a 50-minute facility, there would be more room for kids to learn the sport and grow in the community. We could provide swim lessons and have a diving team, go off for waterwork classes. All of these are for community and family environments for the participants. I want to see this community thrive. Between my sisters and I, we have six, the Dixon Amon, the Jeff High record was six different times. And I speak for all of us when I say I want those records to fall. I want to see the pool get faster and get bigger, and I want to be there to congratulate that next generation of kids, just like the generation before me was there for us. I want more kids to have the opportunities in college and win home more trophies to Jeff. The swimming community is amazing, and I want everyone to be able to join in.
Who wants to follow that?
Not me.
No. Would there be anyone else who would like to speak? Certainly, sir. You're a brave man.
Well, guess I'll go. Don't you dare start that timer. It's about five minutes. I've got little stacks here if you guys want them, since the timer didn't start yet, so you can see better what I'm talking about. Boom. If you pull that up. So my name's Danny Struck. I live at 2315 Allison Lane. And I have almost every one of them in class, or I know every single former swimmer, and probably a future swimmer or the ones in it. And I don't really care that much about wrestling. Everybody thinks like I'm a wrestling coach. I don't care that much about it. I got a group of kids that I'm committed to, I'm committed to them, and I love all these kids, right? If you were to word commitment, you use the word love. And I came into Jeffersonville 21 years ago, which I'm the longest tenured coach in the school corporation, I was never going to stay. I was never going to stay. I saw the facilities, and I was never going to stay. And then I started seeing the town build, and the town is amazing. And I was like, man, one day that's going to happen to this school. And it's almost at the point that that's going to happen. And if you click on that, we're the smallest weight room in the area. So what I want to talk about real quick is all 22 sports we have in Jeff High. I'm really, like I said, I don't care that much about wrestling. It's just what I have in common with 300 kids in our, in our community, and I want a space for them, but I can't have a space for all these kids, the 22 different sports, if we don't make this change for a pool. That pool is an amazing game changer for everyone. Mandy doesn't want me to use her name back there in the back, but our first time we ever took a vacation, and we went to a hotel that had a SWAT team called on it, because I didn't let her pick the hotel, she said, "If you would have looked at the pool, you would have known what the hotel was like." And ever since then, I always look at the pool before I stay in the, in the hotel, right? I do, too. I heard that. And when people drive by, they want to know if they want to stay in our hotel. And I can't have as many wrestlers, and I can't have 22 different sports lifting in the weight room unless everybody drives by and wants to stay in our hotel. So I really want that pool to happen, not because I care about any one individual sport, but because I care about every single kid in the Jeffersonville community, and I've grown to love them over 21 years staying here. I can't see the time up there, so I'm going to go real fast. Those are the size of the weight room and the state. If you make this change for the pool, we'll go from, I don't want to offend anyone, the worst pool that I've seen, I counted it, I've been to 188 schools in Indiana. That's how many. I sat down today, looked at the map of Indiana, I've been to 188 different schools, and I could count 100 schools our size, found the 6A, 4A, 3A, that were better than our weight room. Every single one of them competed against us, and the same for the pool. Sorry about your pool. I hope it gets knocked down. But we gotta be able to compete with that. We'll be, if we make this change, flip, that's our current stuff. Some sports got together, click, and now we've got this 1600 square foot space between, click one more time, these two rooms. 1600 square feet can only hold 32 kids, and we have roughly 500 athletes at Jeff High, I'm going to say. Penn High School, who's a 6A school, Center Road, who's a 6A school, each fit 900 kids in their weight room a day. If you go back one, that would be the rest in the back one, or hit one more. Keep going forward, forward, or, yeah, yes, correct now. Click, click. That could be in our wrestling room. That would fit 90 kids per period. And then if you fit the other room next to it, we could probably fit as many kids as the schools that are beating us. And now I can impact 22 different schools. I've had 180 kids from my classes sign scholarships in the past 11 years, and I'm only putting 215 kids through there a day. I would multiply that by three or four, if I could go up to 90. I had a kid call me the other day. Mandy walks in, says, "Why are you crying?" And I got a call from the kid the last day of his basic training. He was allowed to make one phone call. I had him in weightlifting class, and I started crying, because I said, "I don't know if I can keep doing this in a room that only fits 32 kids, because that's the only phone call I get. I need like 10 of those a year, right? And I can only get that if we fit 900 kids through that weight room a day." I don't know where I'm at on time. I have a lot more to say, but last night, Tori Pennington, Tori Everett, who met her husband at Jeff High, and now they have a kid with a little Jeff High thing, if you're aware of that, it was one of the best days of my life to see that. She said, my favorite quote, my high school wrestling coach said to me, and it was, "If we don't take the time to show kids the right way, someone with more time will show them the wrong way." And I want to change my coach's quote over the last 46 years of my life that he's been saying to me that got me to be a teacher. And I want to say, if I don't have the space to show kids the right way, then someone else with more time is going to show them, or someone else with more space, there'll be a difference. So that's what I got to say, and I hope I'm under agreement.
Mr. Struck, what do you pay on taxes at 2315 Allison Lane?
I pay, but I know it's not going to go up if you do that.
Not from the school system, if not. I assure you of that. I assure you of that. That's our mantra. You put that well in the wrestling wall when you get in that weight room. All right. Would there be anybody else who would like to share a comment and support? Opposition, you're not coming up, so, please. I'm sorry. Did I say that out loud?
It's going to be hard to follow Danny. My name is Shelley Gast. I live at 1605 Mill Drive, Jeffersonville, Indiana. And I said Gast. Some of you may already, may recognize that name. I'm a transplant, too, for different reasons. 1998, many of you out here, families recruited he Gast, I have my husband at the time, to come down here to tour swimming. And so I was transplanted for a whole different reason. So we came down here in 1998 to build a swim team, and since Coach Pippa has kind of led that brigade, but totally obviously in favor of this, what this brings, not only the pool, and the camaraderie, and the competition, and the families that it brings. I mean, some of these parents in here are some of my best friends, and I would never have done this if it wasn't for swimming. However, I'm going to switch gears on this a little bit. On my first day, that young lady who was this, who came up last and spoke on the swim team, I cannot say anything more than she already said, so I'll kind of switch a little bit of gears there, go with Danny. I also do competitive weightlifting. Yes, at my age, I do competitive weightlifting. And the weightlifting piece that this brings, and the weight room that Danny just talked about, is going to not only affect the pool and the swimmers and the wrestlers, but your basketball players and your football players and every sport that Jeff High has. I have six kids, all of which that come from Jeff High. I could not say anything better about Greater Park County school systems. But what that weight room, I mean, I love the pool idea, don't get me wrong, that's incredible. What competition that could bring to this area and the transplant it could bring is, again, unmatched. But what the weight room, this whole thing combined could bring for your athletics, I think is also something that, just as a reminder, from a swimmer and a parent of a swimmer, a collegiate swimmer as well, all my kids learned to swim here. Again, Kevin went to swim collegially. I met Danny, who's one of the first people I met when I moved down here. So again, it's been great, but what everything, this entire project could bring is something that is not only gonna help the swimmers and the wrestlers, but it is gonna help every athletic that you have here. So just thank you, appreciate the time.
Anybody have any thoughts? Please. Yep, let's go.
So hi, I'm Russell Washington. I live at 519 Parkwood Drive, Parkville, Indiana. And I just want to say, as a wrestler here at Jeff, especially as a female wrestler, wrestling is very male-dominated sport, and we are starting to bring in more females. It just having such a bigger movement, having such more of this positive side of it, will just bring in more people, especially just bring in more people who are willing to try at least. And if people try it, they don't have to stay with it or stay with it. But at least if they try, they're like, okay, it's not for me, that's okay. But most people will actually stay and then just see how it can actually help them and attack them. So just having this more space and having a bigger weight room and just a bigger wrestling room will just brand so many kids' futures into wrestling and experience. This is my first year here wrestling at Jeff. As a sophomore, which I started my freshman year, because I really love it and it's just amazing environment and amazing people. The practice can be tough, but it's just fun tough. And it's pushing you, and it's driving you, and it's keeping you stronger.
My name is Chrissy Trup. I live 113 West Monroe District, Jeffersonville. I started wrestling when I was in third grade. I went to the little clinics they had, they had the high schoolers come coach us. And it was a fun sport. I got attached pretty quick. In middle school, I actually got a little too scared to actually compete, so I decided to be a manager. But we still had really close connections with the high school. So I've actually known the coaches basically as long as I can remember in the program. I remember they would have like a bunch of elementary kids in the gym on these wrestling arenas. I feel like if we had our own space, even more kids would come together and join in. I remember the community that brought, and that's why I kept with it. And I actually ended up moving schools last year. And I tried to wrestle with their program, and they have a good program, but it's just not the same family dynamic that Jeff had. So I decided that for my senior year, I would come back and finish at Jeff. I feel like with a wrestling arena, more people would be interested in giving it a shot, and we would have more people come and stick with the program.
My name's Ian Prince. I live at 3921 Cooper's Lane, Southernburg. I've been wrestling at Jeff for, since elementary school deep. I think my first year was my kindergarten, or when I was four, at Jeff. And it's been great. I took a few seasons off, but we had that wrestling room for as long as I can remember, since Coach Struck's been here, possibly even longer. And as the years go, we grow and grow as a team. And now, on those two mats that we have, we don't really have a lot of space. Like I would try to wrestle somebody, and I would wrestle somebody. But with this wrestling arena, we did get a lot more mats, have a lot more space to wrestle, and it will be safer because when you throw somebody in practice, you won't hit somebody's head. And switching gears a little bit, going to the weight room. I know that there's a lot of my teammates, I also play football and men's volleyball at Jeff. And there's a lot of my teammates that don't be, that are now able to get into the sports performance class and lift weights throughout the season because of the limited space we have. And if we get this weight room, it will have more and more people be able to get in, and we will have better seasons in sports, and we have stronger athletes. And we could be able to compete at a 6A or 4A level that we are at now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Hannah Shelton, through Albany, Indiana. I'd like to kind of change and go back to why Jeffersonville Elementary needs a new school. I'm speaking for my classroom. Victoria Demme is our teacher and the parents that work there. I'm going to speak for a population that usually doesn't get spoken for, the moderate-severe needs students. 90% of the kids I work with learn on verbal. They aren't able to advocate for themselves, so I'm going to advocate for them. In our classroom, we just don't focus on academics, we focus on functional skills. Skills like communication, toileting, walking, jumping, eye contact, task attention, plus many more. We have been taught in several PDSs that in order for a child to be successful, we need to make sure we fit the environment to the child. Children who have a moderate to severe intellectual disability or a child who is on the autism spectrum need to have certain things in their classroom in order for us, the staff, to meet their functional needs, which in turn will affect their academic performance. Some of these things include, like an air mitt in our bathroom. Right now, we changed 25-plus pull-ups with no airflow, which is unhealthy for staff and children. A working shower would be nice to help for children that have accidents because of baby wipe pedal and so much. A mind's motion room, sensory breaks are extremely important for all students. Many students in our school don't have the ability to sit for long periods of time. They need that outlet to move and regulate their bodies. Right now, we're sharing, I think you heard last night from Elizabeth Beck, that our mind's motion is with the health room, so that we should also. A fenced-in playground would be great. Right now, our students are not able to go out to recess together because it is unsafe. We have to take five or six at a time. We have too many elopers and not enough eyes. A fenced-in playground would benefit preschool and special education children. Southern Indiana is a very small community. I've had the privilege of talking with many teachers who work in surrounding districts. I'm proud to say, in my opinion, that Greater Park County schools are miles ahead of other districts when it comes to special education. I'm extremely proud to say that Parkwood Elementary hosts all sped programs and are willing to accept all children regardless of where they came from or what disability they have. All children deserve to have a building where they feel safe and welcome by all. And with that, I would like to add that I have been a parent in our district for 33 years and at Parkwood for 23 years, I believe. And our kids do deserve a new building. We see a lot. And the cleanliness, just things that, you know, come with an old building. And anytime you're in, I invite you into our classroom, come in and see what we're, where we are.
Okay. Any others? All right. Oh, all right. One minute.
My name is Jason Sawyer, I live at 440 Thompson Lane, Jeffersonville, Indiana. I'd like to first thank the school board and the schools, Greater Park County school system, and the superintendent for taking on this endeavor. I grew up in South Noble, and I went to Hamilton for a year. I went on to Ole State where I played basketball there for two years and got a degree in architecture. Our families lived in Jeffersonville now for 15 years. And I've been in the architectural industry for 20-plus years. During that time, I participated on numerous K through 12 renovations or new builds, higher education, sports facilities. Everything from the renovation of Grand Line Elementary all the way to the expansion of John Simon Stadium and Church of Hills. One of the projects I worked on was Valley High School for proposal in South Noble. And they were updating it with an auditorium and a new basketball arena facility. This was a R and D that Love &amp; Farley responded to at that time. And we did not win that project, unfortunately for us. But the winning firm won it and submitted a plan where they incorporated the basketball facility with the football facility. Which encapsulated the whole entire sports programs. They updated the football facility, gave the community something they were looking forward to. The reason why I bring this up is the proposals that I have seen for the school, the new auditorium, is tremendous. And I would like to applaud the kind of community who are doing that. I have seen numerous different solutions that arrived at different proposal bases, but to see this come out early on with the support from the school system, it's a tremendous asset to the school, to the community. And I highly encourage you all to vote in favor of this. It has always been beneficial to the communities where we have done these improvements. And once again, I appreciate your own time and your efforts on this. Thank you.
All right. Any others before I declare this meeting held in carry? Yes, sir. Hold on.
Okay. For my English, so I'm here to represent the Hispanic community, most of the Latinos, especially. Thanks for the opportunity to address the role I have in Dartfield. My oldest child attended Parkwood, now here in River Valley on Jeff. I still have two more children who are currently attending Parkwood. I thought about the proposal to build a new part of elementary, and I want to respectfully ask you to approve this. The population of immigrant students is very high at Parkwood, especially Latino women. And I want to speak of behalf of these students that's having affected by the wonderful staff that works hard to meet the challenges and needs of a population that's arrived with a different culture and language on Parkwood. My three children have done well and are always happy to go to school each day. The entire staff has created an atmosphere of care and concern that make the children feel secure. Those of you looking at Parkwood from outside may not see what is going on inside of school. I know the Latino community very well, and I know that Parkwood is cool if it's cool that they want for the children. Because they feel acceptance, love, and passion over them. Now we need a safe, clean, cool building where the children can feel proud. These students work hard and deserve the same opportunities as the other students of the other schools. I hope you would consider these students, I give them a clean, just totally safe building that they will make them feel that they have the same opportunities and success. Thank you so much.
Wow. Thank you very much. I'm not crying, you're crying. If no one else desires to make a comment at this time, I will declare this public hearing ended. Thank you all very much. We have a board meeting after this. We're gonna take just a quick second and then start the board meeting. You're certainly welcome to hang around if you'd like.